Thank you all for joining us. The Columbian is pleased to welcome candidates for Vancouver City Council, position one. I am Greg Jane. I'm editorial page editor at the Columbian. And I think I'll go ahead and let the other editorial board members introduce themselves. Craig?
Hi, my name is Craig Brown. I'm the editor of the Columbian.
Ben?
My name is Ben Campbell. I'm publisher of the Columbian.
And then Scott and Jody.
Yeah, Scott Campbell here, retired mostly, except for editorial board meetings. And Jody?
Same with me, Jody Campbell.
So you kept the fun part in your duties.
That's right. These are the fun part.
And as Amy mentioned earlier, we are recording this. We will post it unedited on our website and our YouTube channel for the benefit of our readers. So with that, let's take one to two minutes for each candidate to introduce yourself and give a brief explanation of why you are running in this race. And then after that, we'll get to specific policy questions. So don't need to address a lot of that right now, but let's start with Kim.
Yeah, and first of all, thank you for this opportunity. It's really good to see you all. And so, yeah, my name is Kim Harless. I'm running for Vancouver City Council, position one. And the reason why I am running is because I'm deeply invested in this community throughout my entire life, through my professional experiences and my personal. And I wasn't seeing the representation that I believe that we need for the future. Being an Indigenous Hispanic woman and somebody that has gone through and tried to survive in Vancouver, as well as thrive now, I'm feeling very fortunate and grateful for where I'm at today. But I've definitely gone through some struggles. And so I feel like we need people that have those lived experiences on our council who know best how these policies are actually going to affect people. So that is why I'm running.
Okay, thank you. John?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and talk with all of you. I am running because I think Vancouver is at a critical crossroad in its future. We are moving from being a small city to being a mid-sized city. And with that brings both opportunity and challenges as we're seeing tremendous growth, not just in downtown, but in the outlying areas. We have challenges of transportation needs and we have challenges that are increasingly growing and increasingly more visible when it comes to homelessness. I believe that the decisions that we make over the next year to four years are going to shape what our city looks like in years ahead. I think I have a lot of experience, not only in local government, having served for four years on the county council, but also working in business and working in real estate and driving people around Vancouver that are new to our area, hearing what they love about the city and what their concerns are. And that gives me just that ongoing feedback about where we have opportunity for growth and what things that we're doing well and need to continue doing. So I think my business experience, my local government experience makes me a great candidate for Vancouver City Council.
Great, thank you. And Mike?
Good morning. My name is Mike Pond, and I'm running for Vancouver City Council because I love Vancouver. I was born and raised here. I'm a fifth generation Washingtonian. I have deep roots and ties to this community. I'm currently a renter off the I-205 corridor, and I've lived in every corner of the city, east, west, central. And I'm currently a marketing specialist for Union Print Shop. I'm an Eagle Scout, so you know I'm trustworthy. I am a proud Penguin, earning my associate's degree at Clark College before I went on to receive my undergraduate degree studying communication and sociology at Western Washington University. While I was there, I served as the vice president for student life, co-managing a $2.3 million budget. That kind of ramped up my local political involvement and since returning home have really invested in transforming leadership at the city, the county, our port, the state and federal levels. It's really been a privilege for me to work to get the right people into the right positions to move our community forward. And these experiences have taught me exactly what it means to be a representative leader and how to be the kind of city councillor that represents each member of our community. Over the last 10 years, I've attended over 100 city council meetings and county council meetings, not to mention C-Trans Board, Regional Transportation Council, Neighborhood Alliance, NAACP, Southwest Washington Labour Council, Labour Roundtable, and many, 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 many other community meetings and gatherings and events to be present and to listen and learn and build relationships with leaders from across this community. And that's really helped me develop the future that I want to see for Vancouver. You know, COVID recovery, a plan to address homelessness, a police camera program, the new operations center, and the structural budget deficit should all be priorities for this council, as well as, you know, residents deserve safe and affordable places to live and family wage careers, accessible transportation options that include both an expanded C-Trans service and a replaced I-5 bridge with a mass transit component to take us into the next 100 years. So I'll be an energetic voice for developing robust career training, building a more, bringing on more housing options for our most vulnerable, aggressively addressing the climate crisis while building a new green energy economy.
And Mike, and we'll get to some of the specifics.
Lots of cares, but I look forward to this important conversation. And I do want to thank the Columbian and the Campbells for putting this together. The community that you build is very important to us. So thank you, and I hope to earn your support.
Well, thank you again, all of you for joining us. Two other housekeeping things. There's a fourth candidate in this race, Justin Forsman. He has online has repeatedly violated our policies, and so we have disinvited him from this meeting. But we're happy to have the three of you. And then finally, should note, you're running for the position currently held by Lori Lebowski, who is not seeking reelection, just so her viewers know. And with that, we'll move on to some. Let's start with kind of a broad question. How has the city COVID pandemic, has that been effective? And where do we go from here? And let's start with Mike.
I'm sorry, did you say start with Mike?
Yes.
I didn't catch the last part of that question.
Where, how is the city's response to COVID been? Has it been affected? And where do we go from here?
Sure. I mean, COVID recovery, that's the lens that we have to look at all of the issues in the city right now. So the response that the city has had, I believe, the small business fee waivers to support our small businesses, the little parklets to support restaurants in downtown. There's been a lot of investment by our small businesses to be able to stay open during the pandemic. And I believe that those are going to be permitted for the next three years, I believe. So there's been little things that the city has done to support our small businesses and to prevent, you know, the shuttering of several businesses, at least downtown and throughout the city.
Are those things that you would have supported?
Oh, yeah. I believe that that's kind of the least that we could have done. And I think that in these new trying times, we have to try, you know, new, new ways to support, you know, not just our businesses, our nonprofits, but our residents. And, you know, in this, in this new time, we're, we've got the rent moratorium that has, or excuse me, the eviction moratorium that's been extended to, you know, the end of September. And then there's CARES Act money that, you know, $30 million that the city is going to have to dole out. And what are those kind of one-time investments and one-time money and how we can use that to, you know, leverage what we already have going on here in Vancouver? So I think that they, the city has done some, some good things, but we still have to be creative because we're just barely getting out of this at this point. So we need to, you know, encourage folks to continue to get their vaccines. The Tower Mall vaccination site has been very successful. I think they're ramping down those efforts because it has been so successful. And now there's mobile units and, and you can go to any old Walgreens or Safeway to get that taken care of. So it's been a multi-pronged approach, and I think that the city's done, done the best that they can. But, you know, we always need to be doing more for our residents.
Kim, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, same question. So the city's response, I think, has been amazing. I was really, so I worked for the Department of, or sorry, the Department of Public Health for the county. And so I was part of that response efforts for COVID, as well as our measles outbreak. So I'm very familiar with disease response. And I was very, it was really heartening to see that the city of Vancouver went out of its way to put up the testing site and the vaccination site, you know, not waiting, I mean, in partnership with public health for sure, but, you know, not waiting to, you know, when there is a need, going out there and doing it. And that is the kind of city response and leadership that we need to continue in these recovery efforts. Their curbside program too is very, so I, I'm the president of Slow Food, and we have a lot of connections with our restaurant industry, as well as our farm workers here. And so that curbside program that they did of the, you know, dining on the, on outside and stuff was so beneficial to so many restaurants. And, you know, helping with a lot of those restaurants, being able to transition into that different model. However, now in recovery, I'm, a lot of my restaurant friends, business owners are now going, wait, how do I transition back? Like, how do I open my doors back up, you know? And so I've been talking to some of those restaurant owners about those things. And so that's where, you know, additional.
How can the city help facilitate that?
Yeah, so that could be a way that the city can help facilitate that. So honestly, the outside, you know, things have been working fantastic, but it's about that making people feel comfortable going into businesses, helping with whatever that assistance is, or, you know, a guidance document for how to reopen, you know, your business would be great. I know the public health department's more part of the food system, or sorry, the food, the, the codes, you know, for public health, food safety. There we go, food safety. So there's not much at the city level with regard to that, but we can definitely do some partnership with those businesses that are now transitioning to that. Also with recovery, oh, and also part of LULAC, Simon LULAC as a council member, if you're not familiar with that, it's our League of United Latin American Citizens. And on Saturday, I was at a vaccine clinic. We still have a lot of people in our Hispanic community that still need to be vaccinated. At Public Health Department, we've seen how our Hispanic community has been hit hardest than any other demographic here. So we were giving out fresh foods from local farms here. So not only was it benefiting the eaters, but also the growers here and the farm workers here in Vancouver and in the greater Clark County area. So getting that food is incredibly important to that vitality of this community. And so that effort, those efforts for recovery need to continue to be focused on the folks that have been impacted the hardest, which is our Hispanic community and other peoples of color. So we need to ensure, and as someone that is a person of color and who has been formally trained and who has gone through all of that, I would be able to provide that as part of our recovery efforts.
Good, thank you. And John?
I think one thing that the COVID-19 pandemic has shown all of us is how much stronger the city's response and all the responses can be when we work together in partnership, as opposed to being at odds with one another. I think looking at the relationship that the city and the county formed early on in COVID with setting up first the mobile, or the testing sites, and then later the vaccine sites, those are partnerships that weren't necessarily naturally happening prior to the pandemic. And so seeing the city and the county come together to really work together towards these things, working with the legislature. Mike mentioned the Parklets Program, that was a great program, the curbside pickup. But another big thing for the restaurants was the legislature allowed to-go cocktails. And if you talk with restaurant owners, there's a huge portion of revenue that comes from alcohol sales, not just food. So having that ability for them to keep that revenue coming in, even when operating on a to-go model, that's something that benefited the city, but couldn't have happened without partnerships and conversations with our legislators up in Olympia. Even at the federal level, with the first round of CARES Act money, there were some challenges getting that money into the hands of local government. So I know both the county and the city had a lot of conversations with our federal legislators that if there's future money coming to local governments, that process has to be streamlined so that that money can come into local government and then get out to the businesses and the programs and the public health departments that really need those most. So in the pandemic, you really saw people coming together to address issues, not just in the public sector, but also in the private sector. Early on, I was involved every week with the restaurant owners, had a call to talk about how do we, how do we deal with this pandemic? And these are groups of women and men who are natural competitors, but realized, get through the pandemic, they had to come together. So they had a call every week to talk about what their best practices were. The mayor and city councillors, myself and other county councillors frequently sat in on that calls to bring what we were hearing and bring support. One thing that came out of that was a need, as Kim talked about, of getting information out. And so the county was able to print out flyers on what the process was when we were going back to phase two opening, kind of the first stage of reopening. What did that look like? We were able to print that information. I actually hand-delivered those to Stein distributors, who distributes to most of the restaurants, and then they were able to get those out to the business owners to help people feel safe getting back to work. So we saw that partnership of business and private sector, different levels of government, coming together to address the issues. And I think that was a real strength. I think a challenge that we all faced was how do we communicate? And I think there were some real challenges with some projects that were going forward in the city where good intentions were there, but perhaps the communication with citizens didn't quite meet the goals, the objectives that I think the city would have wanted necessarily to meet. So communication was a challenge, but I think coordination was, was a big success.
Okay, thank you. Craig, do you have any questions?
Sure. So one thing that has interested me about Vancouver is its Affordable Housing Fund that was approved by the taxpayers a few years ago. So I'm wondering if the candidates could offer their critique of how well they think this fund has been operating and what they would like to see happen in the future. Let's start with Kim.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, there's our Affordable Housing Fund, and there's also the multifamily tax abatement, and that often gets kind of talked about together. And being someone that has gone through, again, I'm just going to keep diving in onto these lived experiences that I've had because I think it is so crucial that somebody that has actually experienced these things is in a position of power. So maybe I shouldn't apologize, but I'm going to keep hitting it. So I'm someone that has had one of those 20-day no-cause evictions. I've gone through that experience of having to suddenly uplift my life and figure out what to do, raising an infant son. Actually, he was a toddler at the time, correct that. And try to figure my life out as that. I was this close to homelessness several times because of things like that, no cause of my own. But I'm going to wrap, go back. So the Affordable Housing Fund, we need to ensure that it's actually benefiting the people and getting to the hands of the folks that need it. And same thing, the multifamily tax abatement wasn't originally designed to be an affordable housing measure. However, that's kind of how it's been used now. And so we need to redirect that. Multifamily tax abatement is supposed to, is more aligned to increase density, whereas the Affordable Housing Fund is to help with building affordable housing. So we need to start, you know, putting things separately or develop something in addition instead of having this little, this crazy mixed model. And so with the multifamily tax abatement, you know, let's focus on density with that one. And let's shift all of the affordable housing into measures that actually make sense and get them to the hands of the people that need them. Whether that's rental assistance, I don't like trickle-down models, you know, where we're helping, you know, maybe developers and giving them the money, and then assuming that that support is going to trickle down. We can't have those assumptions. We need a triaged model where we're getting hands into creating the affordable housing and helping that development, but also directly into the people's hands. And so we can't just go with one approach. It's just like homelessness, you can't just go with one approach. We got to meet people where they're at and have a really good structured system. And I'm a, I'm a big systems person and connect all the dots. So I like approaches like that because it makes sense to me.
Thank you. John, what's your thoughts on this?
Yeah, thank you. I think homelessness and providing affordable housing is one of the most complicated challenges that is facing the city of Vancouver. I think the Affordable Housing Fund has played an important role in the last few years. I think going forward, though, we need to look at how can we leverage that with other funds that are now just recently becoming available? The legislature just increased the document recording fee fairly significantly. That will bring in additional money for affordable housing. There is also the 1/10th of a percent sales tax increase that the city council passed that goes towards addressing homelessness and affordable housing. And so we have some new funding sources. So as we go forward, I think it's really important to look at what are the funds that we have and what gaps may continue to exist. I think the Affordable Housing Fund has done a good job of providing some opportunities for some of the, you know, we'll say, lower barrier individuals that are experiencing homelessness. Where we've come up short, though, is helping those that have more complex issues, more underlying issues that need to be addressed before they can successfully transition into long-term housing, even transitionary housing. So looking at what the gaps are in the system as we go forward with the Affordable Housing Fund, and then looking at what levers they have to pull. And is this fund the right fund going forward? Or should it be adjusted to perhaps look at some of the higher needs or some of the different opportunities that we have for helping those most vulnerable in our community? So I think it's been good stopgap over the last, since it was passed four years ago, five years ago. It is coming up for renewal. So I think having that conversation about is this still the most pressing need? Or are there other needs in our community that those funds could, could be used for if it were to be, go back to the voters for renewal?
Thank you. Mike, what, what have they missed?
Yeah, well, I would just add that, you know, the Affordable Housing Fund, when, when it came online and when it was really filling a need, I think they did a good job. So over $6 million have been awarded. I think there's 14 projects that are, have been in, in the pipeline and are using that money. And I think to, you know, when it was coming on to address, you know, the 2% vacancy rate that we had in Vancouver, that's what we needed. But as I'm having conversations with residents at the farmer's market and at their door, you know, they, this is one piece to that larger homelessness problem, that housing affordability problem. And I think that maybe the voters were voting for this because they thought that it was going to take our unhoused residents off the streets. So it's gone, it's gone to bringing on more affordable units in Vancouver, and certainly that's been a very important piece of this puzzle. But I think as it is coming up for, for renewal, whether or not the council, you know, council-matically extends that or, you know, has, has that larger conversation with, with the residents and the voters, I think that's, that's the route we need to take. The, the citizens need to, a little bit of a re-education on, on what this was for and, and how it's being used. Because I think they, they misconstrue that, you know, this is supposed to be helping the, our unhoused neighbors that are on the street, that they can see out on the freeway, you know, in downtown and, you know. And I think that that's, you know, the Affordable Housing Fund is just a little piece to this larger problem that, that we're dealing with. So I think it needs to, needs to be a new conversation with voters because I do think it needs to go back to the voters. It was part of, you know, the Stronger Vancouver Plan that's kind of been put on hold, but we, we need to have that larger conversation.
Thank you. And what I'm curious, Mike, in addition, because the, despite the Affordable Housing Fund, the homelessness has visibly increased. What other steps are needed? And then I'll get to everybody else. But Mike, what are your thoughts on that?
Sure, sure. I mean, like I said, the Affordable Housing Fund, the multifamily tax abatement is, is another piece of that. But, you know, housing and homelessness is the biggest thing that Vancouver is dealing with, Clark County is dealing with, Washington State is dealing with. So it continues to be the number one thing that people want to talk to you about, you know, in, in the community. So I think the homelessness plan that Vancouver has presented through Jamie Spinelli's work at the city with the Heart Team, I think the sanctioned campsites is a necessary step to, to kind of bringing an out-of-control situation in kind of in, in control to provide those opportunities for, for safety and sanitation and, you know, to be able to have the opportunity to get those wraparound services to, to our neighbors that we're seeing on the street. Because through COVID, the homelessness numbers have gone up. And, you know, with CDC guidelines that we can't sweep homeless as camps if we don't have places for them to go. So we're, we're working on that by converting an old hotel into a shelter, and that's a great step. But it has to be this multi-pronged approach, and, and we need to continue to do more because it's, it's not, it's a problem that we're still talking about for years. And, and we need, we need swifter expedient action.
John, how, how else do we address homelessness?
I think one of the biggest keys is addressing the underlying causes of homelessness, mental health issues, substance use disorders. Housing is definitely a part of it, and the cost of housing makes it more difficult for people to remain in housing. But if solving homelessness were just about building more apartments or building low-income housing or subsidized housing, it'd be a really easy fix. And that's not the case. There's a lot of underlying challenges that need to be addressed. And so that's where, again, I come back to the idea of partnership. The county has, is the lead for mental health services, and the city needs to be in constant engagement with the county, talking about how do we partner better, not just with the county, but also with mental health providers like Columbia River Mental Health Services, to not wait for people to come and request help, but to be proactively going into the community, connecting with the individuals that are experiencing homelessness, getting to know them, building those relationships, and finding what is it that you need to help you transition out of this situation into a better situation for you and your family. We're seeing some of that with the Heart Team, with some partnerships with Columbia River. So I think that proactive approach into the communities to help get people connected to the services that they need and working together, not just the city can't do it alone. It needs help from the state, it needs help from the county, and it certainly needs help from our nonprofit and faith-based communities. So keeping those relationships strong and being proactive in addressing the issue, I think, are the most important keys going forward.
Thank you. Kim?
Yeah, excellent points from everyone. I just, you know, things that I want to add is really, we need a lot more of everything. So like, I've been having conversations with our council for the homeless. Many of homelessness advocates are people that have already endorsed me, that I work with, such as Hector Anahosa, this Thrive team, and so many more. Also part of one of my nonprofits is Urban Abundance, and we go out there and install gardens throughout the community that are not community gardens, but resiliency gardens that are accessible to everyone. So community gardens still are like, this is my plot, don't touch it. Resiliency gardens are open to everyone to just come and, and share food. But we need more mental health without a doubt. So when I worked at Public Health, at the very bottom floor was lifeline services, as well as beds that were available to folks. So we saw those ambulances come in and out all day, as well as the police department, you know. And often there were people just sitting outside the door, just like hoping to get in, and that should not be the case. You know, often when I was stepping outside of the building, my workplace, having to step over people and not really having anywhere to like take them or, or, you know, send them to. And we should not live in a community like that, where people aren't able to live with dignity, don't feel like they have community around them. That is a culture shift that we need to embrace, that folks that are living on the streets are people too. Folks that are struggling are people too. We need to have that empathy as part of our triaged approach. Again, like meeting people where they're at, whether it's they need immediate shelter, they just need somewhere like a P.O. box so they can like have mail delivered to them and be able to find jobs, to having programs like the Talking Trash Program. I worked in the solid waste department, so I worked very closely with the folks on the Vancouver side that operated that program. And I'm so happy to see that that program is expanding because that has been incredibly helpful. And it also cleans our community because we have a litter problem outside of just folks that are living on the streets. In addition to that, keeping people in their homes. So again, that's a triage approach of meeting people where they're at. If we keep people in their, their homes with rental assistance, we'll keep them off the streets, which costs us way more money. Once they leave their home or apartment or wherever they're at, it's going to cost the city a lot more money to get them back into housing. So the more we can help people stay in their homes, the better it is going to be for cost, as well as keeping people with a sense of dignity and also appreciation. Once you have that community connection, you know that your community is there for you, then you are also then able to give to your community. I mean, a lot of these folks are the folks that have, are the most giving people I know. And we need to continue to build that as part of our plan as well, is that sense of dignity and those wraparound services. I was really excited to see the Affordable Housing projects, that they have wraparound services, talking to the council for the homeless, we need more of that. We need wraparound services. So when people get housing, they have someone there that can advocate for them, connect them to resources, and not from like a, it's real, again, it's the dignity part. It's like they're there to help, not to like shame, right? And it's really crucial we have those relationships with people, to uplift them and empower them and not make them feel ashamed for needing help. And those wraparound services are so crucial.
I want to go back at the start of that, you said, we need a lot more of everything.
Yeah.
I think, I think a lot of people will view that as, oh, she wants to spend more money, which means raising taxes. How do we get a lot more of everything without burdening taxpayers?
So kind of what I mentioned, if we keep people in their homes with rental assistance, it will save us money. So yes, it might be an initial, I mean, I'd have to look at the numbers honestly before I can give you like a complete analysis. But again, it's that triaged approach. If we keep people in their homes, it's going to save us money. And so, and the quicker we can get them out of that, living on the street, again, it saves us money because we're no longer having to provide such extensive services. So it might have that initial So it might have that initial cost, but in the end, it's going to keep people off the street, who then are taxpayers themselves. Uh, once they're able to get out into housing, now they're paying taxes and contributing. And eventually, you know, we can taper things down. And what better than to get more people that are paying taxes and thriving in this community? That is an investment that I'm willing to pay for any day.
Great. I I would just add one, one quick thing to this conversation and a piece that has been missing. Um, the Navigation Centre uh, was something that the city tried. I think it was kind of uh, that COVID was the last nail in that coffin. Um, and it was a casualty of COVID. But there is uh, that facility that was a huge investment from the city. Uh, they are uh, working on a plan to to regain that investment by by um, uh, selling that property off. And that's going to be some money that 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 can be reinvested into this problem. And I believe, you know, I I think that it was a a solid try by the city. Um, the neighborhoods uh, didn't react we- well to it, but it it showed, it showed the need for for a day center, um, for a no-barrier entry day center. And and I I think as we um, uh, are are looking at these sanctioned campsites, we're going to also need to look at smaller, you know, spread-through-the-city-sided um, day centers. So there's, there's some money there that that can be reinvested as well.
So can I ask, so Mike, do you think that that was a good idea than to close the Navigation Centre?
You know, I I think uh, the the nonprofit that that was um, that was running the the day center uh, needed more support and help. Uh, I think that COVID really was the nail in the coffin there. Um, had had the pandemic not come, I I I think it would still still be open. Uh, but it it kind of was like, okay, this is, this is done. Let's reassess, reevaluate. We tried a thing, uh, let, let's see how we can uh, take the the strongest elements from from the Navigation Centre and and distribute them throughout the city. So smaller, smaller, um, you know, uh, I think the size of the facility was just so daunting. And um, you know, all the neighborhoods around there. I I went to several of those good neighborhood meetings there at the Navigation Centre and and just so unhappy with with the atmosphere around uh, the day center. And so uh, it was a good thing to try, but we we need to uh, we need to keep trying. And and that's um, a a way that we can do it.
Okay. Kim, do you have any comments? Yeah, go ahead. Kim, go ahead.
I want to have something too, but I just wanted to add to the Navigation Centre.
Go ahead.
It it is an example of how we need more. The reason that it didn't work was because it was flooded with people that needed that assistance and help. And, you know, talking to the folks that were operating that, talking to the council for the homeless, that is what they've told me, is that it is a, it's it's an example of why we need more. The reason it didn't work was because it got flooded, because so many people needed it, and they were not ready or prepared for that. And that site would never be designed to be able to handle that much. So if we opened day centers throughout the community instead of just in one location that can't handle the demand, that would be much more successful.
John, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I think one of the things that needs to happen going forward is when we fund new programs, there needs to be accountability and metrics as to what is this program intended to do and is it meeting those? And too often, I think, programs get, start off with a great idea, and they get funded, and maybe they don't get the results, but they continue to be funded year after year, whether it's through community development block grants or other grant fundings that um, get passed through. So we need to have accountability, and it's okay to try something and have it not work. That's how we learn. But then we also need to say, okay, we need to make changes. Um, I have a little bit different take on the Navigation Centre. I think there was a lack of services being provided there, that it was a place for people to come and be, and that's important. Um, but the city made it very clear, the county tried to engage and say, we want to be able to put some services in place. Uh, and that was not welcome at that time. So if we're going to have these places for people to go, we have to have connection for them to services. So that's an example of where, early on, I think that was a lesson that should have been learned and either changed or implemented, um, or or gone a different direction. So we can't, we have to try new things, um, but we also have to be willing to say, you know what? This isn't working, we had these metrics and it's not meeting there. We're going to try something else and not just keep doing the same thing that we've always been doing.
So um, along those lines, um, a couple of other items. I'm curious what you think about how the city approached this, not necessarily the issue itself, but that's the uh, the Tower Mall site, the Heights redevelopment, and the paving of Columbia Street, repaving for, to put in bike lanes. I'm more interested in, how do you think the process was? How did the council work together? Did they effect effectively listen to the people, or did they not? And we'll start with Kim.
Thank you, sorry. Um, yeah, um, so these are both examples of uh, not involving the community enough, without a doubt. Talking to folks, I think we have some other positions on other city council positions that are open that that's the whole reason they're even running, um, is you have to work with the community. I mean, and I I worked for the county for nearly a decade, it was like nine years and something, uh, months. And so that was always a crucial point that I always did. Um, and so to see a failure in that is really inexcusable. Uh, you have to work with the community from the moment and from the very beginning. And you have to hold those uh, open meetings, um, the open house meetings frequently, provide enough notice. But more importantly, you need to reach the people that don't have a voice. And so yes, there's a lot of talk, there's a lot of folks that are upset about whether it's the Tower Mall site or the Columbia uh, paving site, um, uh, work that's being done. Uh, but I always question, these are the loudest voices, whoops, sorry, I have my work phone's gone off. There we go. These are the loudest voices, what about the folks that don't have a voice right now? We need to hear from them, you know. And so that's what I would ensure would always be happening, is we're not just talking to the folks that have time or resources, we're also talking to the other folks that are out there. And how we reach them is very crucial, because you can't always expect people to come to you, you got to go to them. And so in open houses probably won't work. You have to actually go out physically, newsletter, whatever it is, and actually reach people where they're at.
Hey, Mike, what did you think of the process on those two issues?
Yeah, I I think those are two great examples of uh, how how the city needs to constantly be doing more and constantly being, reaching out to uh, to voters and citizens. Um, there was quite an uproar. It actually created, you know, the the West Side Neighborhood Coalition, the the Heights Neighborhood Coalition. So act- actual citizens and residents that are are feeling very frustrated and and not listened to by by this uh, city council, by city staff. Uh, so that that is kind of a a broader issue of of we always need to be in constant communication with our residents and bringing them along in the process every step of the way. They shouldn't be finding out about this project uh, when it it's too late and too late for comment. So the city does a lot of things to reach out, newsletters uh, to the neighborhoods, you know, uh, um, there, there's all kinds of email lists, there's websites, there's all kinds of social media. Uh, but as as new technologies evolve, as um, you know, we we continue to expand the these communication pipelines, you know, the the Colombian plays uh, a a part in this as well to to communicate with our our residents. So um, it it's an overarching issue, and it and it's not, you know, the nitty-gritty of of the bike lanes and the paving and, you know, the setbacks and and the parking at Tower Mall. But um, citizens need to be heard and valued and 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 listened to. And I think that that um, transcends these two two issues, that it, you know, we have to always be looking at uh, uh, whatever the city does through these lenses.
Uh, John, your thoughts?
Yeah, I largely agree that you can never over-communicate. And I think one of the important things that the city can work on is um, facilitating better two-way communication. The city has a lot of great tools through some of the email lists um, that Mike talked about. I want to say it's a half dozen different uh, Facebook pages, different Twitter pages, LinkedIn. There's a lot of ways that the city is able to push communication out to the citizens. Um, but I think the feedback coming back in sometimes is a little bit more constrained. I think a great way to do that is to continue to strengthen and engage with the neighborhood associations. Um, that is an official way that's a part of the city for uh, the city council, as well as the mayor and staff to hear directly from those citizens um, that are involved. And it's a very low-barrier, easy-access way for citizens to share that feedback about what's going on in their area. Um, I do think it's also important, though, to um, to listen, but listen with discernment and identify what are the um, elements that it's just someone that doesn't want change or someone that just wants to improve the process. I think when you look at Tower Mall as a general concept, that is a good idea for that redevelopment to happen. And so if there's voices saying, just no, 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 that's not necessarily constructive input. But the city council needs to be seeking out the constructive feedback from those neighborhoods that say, yes, this is going to be a good use or a better use of that space. It is the right spot to have this. Here's the concerns that we have specifically, and then really engage on those things, like setbacks and easements and building height and parking requirements that do impact the neighborhoods. So of of listening, but really focusing in on um, the constructive criticism, being open to that, welcoming that constructive criticism, and then engaging um, in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Real, real quick, I'll plug two more, two things that I forgot. Uh, the My Vancouver app, uh, download it to your phone. That's all kinds of information about Vancouver in in your hand. And then Be Heard Vancouver is the site where uh, Ven- uh, the city council solicits feedback on all kinds of projects. So uh, plug, plug to your viewers, uh, if if you are interested in what the goings-on of the city, Be Heard Vancouver.
Okay. Frank, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, uh, so what's the city's uh, biennial budget? Uh, Mike, you know that?
I'm I'm sorry?
What's the city's biennial budget?
Uh, you're you're talking about the the numbers?
Yeah.
Uh, I I think it's like the $3.1 billion, off the top of my head. Or maybe I'm, or maybe I'm reversing those, 1.3 million. They just did, they just did the supplemental budget. I've I've got a number here on my notes, let me, let me look for you.
No, no, you don't have to do that. Uh, John, do you know?
Yeah, I believe it's in that 1.2 to 1.4 billion dollar range.
It is, it is 1.3.
Okay. Do you agree with those people?
Yeah, it's 1.3.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Kim, is the city doing enough to address climate change?
No. Um, yeah, uh, so I I have an environmental science background, that's what my degree is in. Um, and that's a hard science, so I've taken genetics, bio-geochimistry, you name it, um, that is a hard science. Um, and so I know the technical, the technicalities that, and this is something we don't have on our current council. We don't have, we have a lot of people with a lot of heart and passion, uh, but we don't have people with that technical expertise, which is what I'd be able to give um, as a value-added to the the city council. Um, and so we are not doing enough. We need to ensure that new developments are made thinking about the future, such as like having an all-electric grid, um, because the future is solar, the future is wind. The future needs an electric grid. And so future developments, and I'm going to publicly say it, should not be made with uh, a natural gas in it. And they need to be thinking about the future, because fossil fuels are going to die out. We're not going to be able to use them. And we need, if we're investing money as taxpayers into these developments, we want stuff that's going to last a long time, and it's going to benefit our community the most. That's how I want my, personally, my tax money to be used. Um, and it's going to be in the best interest. And we also have to have an environmental justice lens. And by that, I mean, again, our historically marginalized communities, our people of color, people that are on the streets, people that are experiencing um, low-income areas are the ones that are being hit by climate change most. You see it even today in this heat wave, right? Who are the people that are being impacted? That's the people on the streets, that's the people that don't have good insulation in their homes, that's the people that can't afford air conditioning. Those are the peoples that um, you know, can't have things like solar panels on their roof or whatever, to like, not, so that they're off the grid, so to speak, you know? Because there were a few, my lights went off for a little bit during this heat wave, I don't know if yours did. Um, that was scary, it was like, no, nothing AC. Um, so, and all of those things are going to impact, and again, those are the lived experiences I have. I've been in heat waves before. You know, you can put in all the AC you want, but if you don't have good insulation, and there are programs out there uh, for multifamily to uh, properly insulate homes. And if you ask anybody um, about the energy, like what actually uses the most energy, what actually will be more cost savings, um, and less, the biggest impact on greenhouse gas emissions? It's not your light bulbs, it's your insulation. And so those are the programs that we need to think about. People get really excited about light bulbs or garbage, and I I'm from the garbage industry, so hopefully they don't. Uh, garbage is great, and actually is a huge priority too, um, as far as uh, food waste. Food waste is incredibly, incredibly high up there on something that we need to tackle. Um, we're also going to be experiencing flooding. Um, I know it's kind of hard to think about that right now, because of the current heat wave. Uh, but flooding is going to be a huge issue for the Pacific Northwest as well. Um, and we'll, we will see that, because the, when it does rain, again, everything is more extreme. So when it does rain, it's going to be a lot. And so that flooding is just going to go through, and we need to prepare for that as well, as well as fires. We need to have a fire department that's properly funded. I know right now, speaking to the fire department, they don't have everything that they need for the current, for what our current challenges are. And that's not including all the wildfires that we're going to be having, um, people's homes, um, all the dryness we're going to experience, are experiencing right now. Um, we're not doing enough. And again, those measures for what our climate action plan is, it needs to be more than just greenhouse gas emissions. I know a lot of people want to focus on that, but it's something that people can't really relate to. We need to focus on other measures too, like how many homes are being insulated? How many uh, urban canopy coverage? That needs to be increased, because that reduces, the more canopy you have, not only it doesn't increase air quality, and air quality is then going to reduce the cost on our medical system, um, which then helps all of us again as taxpayers, the more healthy people are. Um, so improving that air que- that uh, urban canopy will improve air quality, give people shade during heat, and also reduce the cost for their homes if they have those trees uh, protecting their homes, um, as well as um, you know, a like, a more thriving environment, you know, to like, go and walk and everything, which improves our quality of life as well. So I I could just keep talking environment, so I'm going to stop.
Hang up there for a sec.
Yeah.
Uh, John, what are your thoughts? Is the city doing enough regarding climate change?
I think the city can can do more in this. And I think um, where I look at this is the green economy is the 21st century economy. Too often, climate change and dealing with climate change is pitted against business, and that doesn't actually need to be the case. There is an energy storage facility going forward, um, east of us in Clickatack County, that is not only going to help store wind and solar power, um, not using lithium batteries that have their own environmental challenges. Um, that project is going forward, it's going to bring millions to that community, uh, great paying union jobs to that area, um, and help us become more green while reviving, you know, some of those rural economies. So we need to look for ways, and the city needs to partner with CREDC, uh, with the port, to look for ways that how can we become a leader when it comes to the 21st century uh, green economy? I think it's also important, though, that when we're taking action, that we take meaningful action and not just action that we do that makes us feel good. The majority of carbon emissions come from transportation, not from, you know, for example, residential natural gas use. So the idea that by banning natural gas and new apartments or new residences going forward is going to solve our climate change, that's a feel-good measure that doesn't really move the needle that far. So I think looking at our transportation infrastructure, the kind of vehicles that the city purchases and uses, um, the city has three votes on C-tran, the type of buses that C-tran invests in and uses going forward, um, even things like in commercial development code and the number of charging stations that are uh, required in new commercial developments. Those are all small levers that can adjust, uh, hit that really big supply of carbon, which really comes from transportation. So um, summarizing, using the 21st century green economy as an economic driver for our regions through partnerships, uh, but then also making sure that we're taking meaningful steps to address the issue, not just things that we do because it makes us feel good.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, uh, great, great topics already covered by both Kim and John. I I think uh, is the city doing enough? Uh, no, is it doing in, uh, fast enough? No, uh, they are working on a climate action plan. It is, you know, I think the the city has um, three main themes or objectives uh, that they are looking at everything through. So uh, safety, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, and climate action. And so that really, those three things really affect everything that the city is doing. And and uh, I, you know, I I think that the uh, climate action plan is a perfect uh, example of how we do need partnerships uh, with other municipalities, with the with the county, with the port, with the city of Portland, with the um, with Pearson, with uh, the uh, Portland Airport. You know, a- all of these things uh, affect us here in Vancouver. You know, the the imaginary lines that are are drawn for the city, uh, you know, the the wind and air and and certainly the heat um, don't stop there. So uh, we we need to be developing this plan in conjunction with our our other local partners. Uh, and I think um, it it needs to be, it needs to be swift. Uh, uh, I believe, you know, it's at 2022, spring of 2022, when that's um, plan to to come on board. There are actions that could be taken now. John, John mentioned uh, the the city's fleet, so any new investment in in vehicles uh, need to be electric. Uh, I believe that C-tran did just uh, bring on eight new uh, electric buses, and that's a, that's a great step. Um, and as well as, you know, it it's, it's the natural gas discussion and how we uh, wean developments off of natural gas. Uh, and and um, I I Uh, and, and um, I, I, you know, John mentioned the, the charging stations as well. Um, we're, we're going to have to be able to charge these, these electric vehicles. So, but there's other, there's other little things that um, uh, we should be encouraging all of our citizens to participate in and educating citizens i- in these efforts. You know, a lot of municipalities have banned uh, single-use plastic bags. I think that's uh, uh, an easy one that, that the city could take on. Uh, there, you know, uh, if, if this weekend wasn't enough proof that uh, climate change is real, it's happening right now and it's um, you know, uh, it could be called climate collapse because we're already uh, experiencing these things. Who, who doesn't remember uh, uh, you know, less than a year ago, not being able to go outside for two weeks because you couldn't breathe the air? You know, these are existential threats right now and need to be addressed swiftly.
And if I could, if I could just add?
Yeah, Kim.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, first, um, I've been endorsed by the Tiara Club as well as the Sunrise Movement. I'm still waiting on endorsements from other environmental organizations. Um, but I just wanted to add that um, when I worked for the county, I, I was negotiating a contract for our haulers uh, for wa- uh, waste and recycling. And you will be seeing uh, an electric recycling truck out there. And I know that we worked with the city um, for their contract. And so you're going to be seeing some of those electric garbage trucks out there. And so those are measures where we can implement that contract should have those inclusions. Because a lot of work we actually contract out as a city and as a county. And we need to have those things in our policies to ensure that that work also is meeting those measures. Also, in the paper today, um, there was about the operations center. Um, I'm actually very familiar with that location and it's right next to Lekner landfill, um, which is an active landfill that is near retirement right now here. Um, it's just outside of city limits, um, but the new operations center is going to be in a parcel that's next to it. Um, that landfill, um, I had talked to actually councillor Bart in his day job about putting solar panels on it. And so this is something I want to look into, um, that, those solar panels that are on this otherwise unusable land could potentially um, then power the operations center. And so those are the programs and the ideas that we need to continue to use. How do we utilize unusable land to then incorporate into um, investments that all of us are paying into for the near future? Um.
And I'm going to stop you there. Um, uh, any other questions?
Nope.
You know, I might just said, you know, there's been a lot of good discussion here today, but um, any thoughts on our um, our police department and, and the that, that whole set of issues?
Who do you want to start with?
Oh, Mike, you, you want to start? Yeah, I'll, I'll go first. Um, I think that uh, over the last year, uh, not only has the pandemic been affecting our lives, but um, uh, civil unrest and, and racial equality, uh, a string of officer-involved fatalities here in Clark County in Vancouver. Um, I am a supporter of the um, police uh, uh, camera program. It's not just body worn cameras um, that, that they'll be equipped with. It's um, a dashboard camera, it's a backseat camera. And I, I believe the city has allocated three million dollars for uh, for that process. It's going to take a long time to really hash out the policy over, over this program. We have to do it right. So that's uh, learning from other municipalities who have uh, it, um, implemented it successfully and avoiding the pitfalls that a, a lot of them have faced. Uh, and so that's, you know, all, all kinds of details from when the officer turns it on and off, how that data is stored, who can request it uh, through a public information act. There's all kinds of details that need to be uh, nailed down and, and it needs to be done right and it needs to be done swiftly. Um, I, I think that uh, there's uh, a discussion about uh, defunding the police. Um, and I think that um, our police department uh, has cobbled together funding over the years and, and is underfunded. Uh, response times are so high and through the pandemic, uh, the uh, ability for, for officers to respond and, and uh, address situations have, have been diminished. I think uh, that uh, there needs to be uh, more support for our citizens. So when, when you're, you know, ca- calling the police, if, if it's a non-emergency, there need to be other options to uh, for response. So uh, social workers or um, you know, uh, uh, I, I, I believe it's, there's a program out there called Kahoots uh, that, that uh, helps mitigate some of those um, those problems and it, it is cost-effective. So there's um, a lot of uh, things that need to uh, continue to be adjusted as we kind of rethink uh, the role of police in our community. Um, but you know, like the camera program is huge and, and officers want them and citizens want them because it protects both of them. And so um, you know, that needs to happen and uh, cutting funding i- is not something that, that I'm supportive of. Because once you cut a program, once you cut personnel, it is so hard to, to bring that back and to roll, roll that back and, and uh, we're, we're already understaffed and underfunded as it is.
Kim, how about, how about, what was your thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I, I agree. Um, well, I'm going to back up. I actually, I actually wanted to be a police officer. Um, I know some people like don't want to know that or want to like say otherwise, but I actually, I met with our chief when I was going through uh, leadership Clark County. I'm a graduate of 2019. Um, we had one of the sessions on, is on uh, law enforcement and the justice system. And that was really eye-opening, you know, having a tour of the jail and everything. But um, our chief was talking about DEI and how it was really hard to recruit people of color. Um, and what measures, you know, he's been taking and like how there's a issue with that. And so I, I ended up meeting him with for coffee and we talked DEI. You know, this was way before, you know, all of the, I've been doing DEI stuff for a long time. You know, it was a great conversation. I'm not anti-police. I obviously, I wanted to be a police officer, just didn't work with my family situation. Um, I then continued to work for the county uh, instead and now I'm in a different role. Um, but I, I strongly believe, yeah, we need body cams now. There's been studies out there that actually saves the city money. So the sooner we implement it, that actually, the sooner we'll start saving money. And we know what to do. Like, we don't need to like keep waiting. Our, our people of color, NAACP, LULAC, everyone, we know what the best practices are. Let's just do it. Um, so that's what I would try to push forward is we need to expedite this process and get them implemented as soon as possible because it's actually going to save our city money. Um, also, we need to reimagine what public safety is. What does safety mean to people? And when we get uh, word from a lot of folks in our community that they don't actually feel safe, uh, we need to listen to that and, and ask ourselves why that is and come up with solutions. Um, we have a shortage of police officers anyways. So reallocating that money that's dedicated to those vacancies, uh, we can put to mental health workers. We can put to mediators that work more to prevent crime and prevent people from being incarcerated. Cause once people have a criminal record, it's really hard to like invest in the community. You're, you know, you're pushed out from a lot of options. And those, that's, that's, that's a detriment to our community. It's when people aren't helped, when people aren't out there helping to prevent people from having records and mediating, that's important. Additionally, um, crime is often, we need to work on that prevention because crime is often a result of poverty. It's actually, you know, helping people get out of poverty will actually reduce your crime rate. So we need to reimagine what public safety is because we need to work on that prevention, which is preventing poverty to begin with. And so that's how we, I'm not, defund is like a horrible slogan. I like reimagining public safety. Um, we're not trying to defund, we're trying to just realca- allocate monies that aren't really being used anyways to focus on that prevention strategies and getting people out of poverty. So I'll end it there.
Good answer. John, uh, you want to wrap it up?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Um, I agree um, completely. I would not support at all defunding the police. Um, I think that we need to do a better job of recruiting uh, officers to fill those vacancies because Mike mentioned response times are high. And so rather than say we're going to pull that money away and spend them on other things, we need to do, find new ways to recruit. And I think that's, touches across the city as a whole in terms of when it comes to DEI, we can't just keep recruiting and doing things the same way um, that we always have. We're going to get the same results. So we have to be rethinking, how do we engage with the different communities that live in our city? Um, fully supportive of the camera program. I think that's going to be an important tool um, for going forward. I applaud the city council for not just making the policy decision to embrace that, but also starting to work on the budget process. Those are two very different things. It's really easy to say, yes, in policy, we support a camera program. Uh, but if you don't allocate the funds through the budgeting process to do that, it's never going to happen. So I think that's a, an important step. I think just one other thing to add, um, is that we have to remember that this is all a system. And one thing that hasn't been mentioned yet, uh, Mike brought up Kahoots. But within that program, we also need to make sure that we're training our crescent, our nine-one-one operators to properly um, dispatch those calls. Portland had a similar program to Kahoots, wasn't exactly the same, but it was a, a similar intent. Um, but they, it struggled because they just didn't quite have the right dispatchers trained in the way to get the right tool for the job. And so in all of these issues, it's not just a single silver bullet that's going to fix it. It's looking at the system, um, looking at the criminal justice system as a whole. How do we prosecute crime? Um, but on the very front end, kind of get back to where we were, how are our calls dispatched? And how do we get the right person, the right uh, training to that situation? And that's not just mental health. Sometimes that's including uh, medical health. Columbia River Medical Health Services is working on um, increasing their ability to provide both medical and behavioral health services. And sometimes both of those are what's needed. So train our operators to dispatch the right tools of the job, having well-funded people respond to those that are trained for the right situation. Um, last thing, you know, the city has a, a pretty broad list of recommendations from the community in terms of police reform. They're working through those, seeing what's feasible, what's not. And I'll continue to support um, that effort of engaging with both our community as well as with our law enforcement professionals in terms of, you know, what makes sense and how do we move this forward to have a more equitable community.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to each of you. Um, uh, we're going to move along now. Give us your final pitch for why voters should support you, please. And we'll start with John.
Thank you. Um, I think it's one thing to sit here and talk about the great ideas. There have been a lot of good ideas discussed here. It's another to actually have the experience of going, being in elected office um, and doing that. And I think if you look at the endorsements that I've received for my campaign, that's a statement from both the community and other leaders in the community that I'm able to do that. I think in my four years as a Clark County councillor, I built a reputation as being a pragmatic problem solver uh, that was willing to listen, take in feedback and solve some of the challenges. Uh, some of the endorsements that I've received uh, from the IAFF four five two, our local firefighters union, labor three three five, our laborers, uh, former mayor pro tem, uh, Larry Smith, former mayor Tim Levitt, state representative Paul Harris, um, port commissioner Jack Berkman, um, and many more. They're on my website at johnblum.com. Uh, that's a pretty diverse group of people and people that don't necessarily always align ideologically. And I bring that up because I think that speaks to my ability to work together with people, to find consensus and to find actual solutions to the challenges that Vancouver faces. So um, I'm excited about the opportunity to serve, to help bring Vancouver from uh, the last century into the next century and to see just incredible growth and opportunity for everyone within our community.
Great, thank you. And I want to add one more question that I'm going to ask each of you. It, I, I think you all have, have some very good ideas, but you're all, it seems for the most part, very aligned on most of the issues. So John, what sets you apart from the other two candidates?
I think we have a lot of growth that's going to happen in Clark County. Um, the Heights project is going to bring a lot of new residences there. We have a Vancouver Innovation Center on the east side, uh, the Columbia Gateway Project. That's a mixed-use project um, down the road, the area.
But how are you different from Kim and Mike politically?
I was getting there. Um, I'm the only one that has experience in working in the development world and knowing what does that look like? How do we um, create livable, sustainable communities? It's really easy to say, we need this, this and this. But if you don't understand the impact that that has on the ground, um, there's challenges. An example of that, you know, the county, when we were trying to create more pedestrian pathways, um, I was able to sit down with county staff and say, here's how we write this in code so that it translates to what we want in the ground, increasing pedestrian accessway. So understanding how communities actually get created, um, allows me to have a, a unique voice when it comes to um, what those communities look like as they go from, you know, just flat ground to our future 20-minute walkable, livable communities that have business and retail and housing and open space all integrated. So that, that private sector experience, I think, is unique and currently missing from the council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike, give us your uh, final pitch for why voters should support you and what sets you apart from Mike and John?
Kim and John, yes. Uh, great. You know, I, I'm, I'm running to strengthen and add to the work that's already been accomplished here because I believe Vancouver's best days are, are ahead of us. You know, I've done the homework, I've attended the meetings and I'm in the room when the tough decisions are being made and I'll continue to do so uh, when elected. You know, it, it, it's a privilege to live here, to be a privilege to rep- re- represent the city. I, I um, I bring a u- unique perspective. Um, uh, the, the youthful energy and passion, I, I hope that you uh, can see that. Um, but also, you know, I, I am, I'm a renter and over 50% of uh, the city are renters. Uh, and you know, over 50% of them are rent burdened. So they're paying more than uh, 30% of their income on, on housing. Uh, and I think that that's an important perspective, uh, as we address, you know, the largest issue uh, in Vancouver is housing and affordability. Uh, you know, I've, I've lived in every quadrant of the city. I know, I know the city like the back of my hand and know uh, what the issues are downtown, what the in- issues are all the way on the far side of E- East Vancouver. Um, you know, I, my community engagement and, and involvement has uh, you know, it's been years uh, at this and it's um, uh, being, being involved in, in the community is uh, is a passion of mine. It's a community service that, that stems from my, my days as a boy scout and in, in leadership in high school. So, you know, I, I, I have great respect for, for my, my two opponents here. Uh, but I wouldn't be on the ballot and wouldn't put my, my name on the ballot if I didn't believe that I'd be the best fit for this position. I, I think that uh, I have relationships across the spectrum uh, to leverage. Uh, I have a great relationship with our mayor and certainly a, a stellar personal and professional relationship with every one of those councillors that I want to, want to serve with. Um, you know, and I, I've been endorsed by uh, hundreds of Vancouver residents and citizens, business owners. Um, you know, uh, Sharon Wiley, the state representative Sharon Wiley, uh, former uh, speaker pro tem, Jim Moller, uh, uh, port commissioner Eric Lebrant, as well as uh, school board directors, Wendy Smith, uh, Vicky Bradford and uh, Tracy Barrows. I, I have uh, relationships all over the political spectrum and, and, and not political, just community-minded folks. And I'm, I am prepared to uh, leverage those because a, a lot of these issues that we've been talking about need swift action and need relationships to, to make that happen. Uh, the, the same old, same old is, is uh, business as usual is not working. Uh, we have seen that over the last year with the civil unrest and, and the pandemic and, and certainly, you know, this weekend with climate. And so I, I am prepared uh, day one to handle any committee uh, assignment, uh, to handle um, a- anything that, that come, come at me and I'm prepared and knowledgeable about exactly what the city uh, is in front of the city uh, and their purview and I'm, I'm ready to take action. So uh, I, I, I hope you see that and I, I uh, hope to earn your support. The endorsement of the Columbian is so important. Uh, I think that um, it, it is a critical service that you provide. And, and your, your readers are, are educated citizens and uh, most likely are, are uh, highest voting citizens. So it's important. That's why I'm here and uh, I thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. Uh, Kim, your final pitch and what sets you apart?
Yeah, um, so I'm someone that's raised here. I went to Sifton Elementary School, Covington Middle School, and then I graduated from Heritage High School. I then stayed here and went to Clark College and WCU University uh, here in Vancouver. So I'm like a full like, you know, Vancouver experiences is in here. Um, and I also, I worked for the county for uh, over nine years. That's nine years of experiences uh, if, of experience in county government, how it operates. And I worked in very close partnership with the city. I know a lot of the people that are staff people at the city. Um, I know them very well. Um, so I have nine years of that experience. Also, right now, I am an elected official. I am on the Charter Review Commission for District One, which represents a majority of the city of Vancouver. So I'm already representing city residents today. Um, and I was then elected by 15 people to be the co-chair of that entire commission. And we're a whole new commission that's never been happening. Um, I'm actually really excited. Uh, you know, being elected to the city council, working with only um, six other people instead of fif- uh, 14 other people is very exciting. Uh, it's been very interesting. So I, I have a lot of experience just from this um, elective uh, experience of working with a slew of different personality types, different folks. And you know, we're charging ahead. I hope you, I hope you all have been um, staying tuned to that and you're always welcome to reach out to me for information on that. Um, but I've also been incredibly community involved. Um, so I have been a um, nonprofit leader uh, for, since college. Um, and you know, whether that was Watershed Stewards coordinating that program, Columbia Springs. Um, I am a council member on LULAC. I am the president of Slow Food Southwest Washington, um, as well as vice president of Urban Abundance. I'm also a representative on our Clark County uh, Food Systems Council. Um, and so I have a lot, people say, oh, I don't know who you are. Um, well, if you're in the nonprofit world, you do know who I am.
Um, well, if you're in the nonprofit world, you do know who I am. And that name goes far. Um, and, but that brings me back to, on something that sets me apart, um, is that I'm not a political party person. I never have been, never will be. I'm here for the people. I am community-first. And I love that this role is nonpartisan as it should be. And that's something we're actually looking in the charter to change for the county council because that's the way it should be in my belief. We're at the local level, we need local people, we need local policies, local issues and not the distractions. So that's what sets me apart. I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a Republican, I don't have a history of being in those political parties either. This is not a political career for me. This is something I'm doing for the community and I'm raising my hand and volunteering to do it because it's what is needed. Um, I've also am a new homeowner. Um, so I rented all my life, had that no cause eviction. I know those experiences. I'm in central Vancouver, um, which is a representation we highly, we really need um, on our council. And uh, we're just forming our uh, neighborhood association um, in Wallet Grove. So that's really exciting to be a part of. Um, and because I'm in that newly annexed area, so I have those experiences of well, as well. Um, I'm also, um, what sets me apart is that, well, we haven't had a person of color on our city council since 1970. Um, I'm indigenous and Hispanic and I'm going to keep pushing that forward and making it, you know, a part of my campaign because we need that representation. We are a growing, diverse city and we need people of color that have those lived experiences and those connections with our community. Um, because that is what builds safety too. So all of this stuff is connected. Um, and lastly, I just want to mention endorsements. Um, I also have endorsements from our community. Um, Tanisha Harris has been very involved, Dawn Orange, Hector Inohosa, Ed Rosales and so many more. But more importantly, I have the endorsements of our community that aren't big names and that resonates so much more with me. Like, those are all names you probably all know, but within my own circles, there's names that you probably don't know that go really far. You know, such as Sunrise O'Mahony, who's a huge advocate in our community, Merida Green, so many individuals. Um, and you know, like seeing the donors come in, people that donate like $5, like that is so heartwarming. And we have a huge volunteer base. Um, and that's what sets me apart too, is I, I'm truly a representative of our, of our diverse community and growing community here. And I'm also a millennial as well and can bring that representation that we need on our council. I'll end it there.
Well, thank you very much to each of you and good luck. Thanks for joining.
Thanks.